All the others meeting in the committee, all the local board members, that's for us. But I believe that I believe to the flag of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And perfectly pleased by the role.
Rusty Wonika, Rusty Kessbrill.
Present.
Rusty Boror, how's that? Rusty Boland here. Trager Piedelom from Parker's present supervisor Fletcher.
Here. Thank you, motion to excuse Trager Piedelom and Trent Piedelka.
Similar.
That they moved and.
Support.
I was a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll deposit a motion carrier of the agenda replaced conditions of lesion. Motion to move this.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
With the move is your support.
Support.
There is support, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carrier is public comment, anybody here to speak, see nobody to speak, members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. A lot of project activity right now. Couple of things I mentioned at the last meeting or last week, the I think we do have the contractors outside. They're your Greek project finishing that up from last year, so they still do some work on St. Joe. And then in the neighborhood, so they began today in the in the neighborhoods. You see the driveway out here is closed, so we're finishing up the water main work and abandonment of our old water mains should be done this week. But while the small thing, you'll see a special apparatus holding up the power pole there, it's a water main very close to the power pole. So nothing is, nothing is easy. We've received more than, so far more than a half a dozen inquiries on our children, so we're getting calls. Fielded quite a few calls today and then CAP has fielded several calls too, so hopefully those will result in some, some projects moving forward. Just remind, we have the clarin groundbreaking on Wednesday, maybe want to bring some boots or shoes.
What was the time of that again? Did we get a calendar invite?
No.
I don't think we had a meeting. Calendar invite, I think sent out.
Got an email, I'm not a calendar, I actually mean either eleven.
Yeah, this is already about, it was eleven. But it was eleven, I can't remember.
Yes.
Just, this is not super important, but we have a group of managers in the middle of the net here. We meet kind of semi regularly, sometimes once a month, sometime it's like that longer. But we're going to be hosting the meeting here in Delta this month, so it's always, right now it's kind of fun to work for Delta with all of our projects. So we're kind of an envy of other managers, so just gives something to brag about over lunch. Last, another piece of fun, fun news is we had a couple of employees today who took the day off and kind of created a thirty-two mile ultra marathon and just walked all around Delta. If you're interested, I'll pass along the map, but it's a lot of fun. A lot of different employees went out and joined them for a little piece of their walk. And so they really traversed a lot of Delta and a lot of our amenities and the parks and pathways and that type of things, he can pass it around. But yeah, thirty-two miles was Kathy Sobsec and Erica Gupta, she's in the manager's office, the IT.
And why didn't you do the thirty-two miles?
I did a mile and a half with them, but I was in a shirt and tie, so I was limited. I was going to go the distance, but I started sweating.
Wellness activity, part of the wellness work that.
It really wasn't part of anything with the township, just some, they like to walk and Kathy being in parks. And they just kind of, I don't know, they kind of hatched this idea. Erica's done half, has done her first half marathon, so they just kind of created this and wanted to do it. And explored a lot of areas of Delta and kind of it's something that's a kind of a pride thing.
So a couple of questions on this one, so they just came up with this route. Was it intentional? Looks like it hits a few of the parks. Does it try to hit all of our parks?
It hits all of our walkable parks.
Walkable parks.
So everything that you can reach on foot and utilizes our non-motorized pathway systems as much as possible. So anything that you can walk on foot and every amenity that they get hit going through the township. So that's thirty-two miles that they ended up walking.
It'd be nice, so is thirty-two miles actually an ultra marathon?
Ultra marathon is thirty-one, so they did a little extra.
Way to go, the extra mile. I think it'd be great to promote that, maybe in the, just so residents know, like there's a route we can do to hit, like to you like that, you know.
We've got our five K, our virtual five K coming up, if you've seen that. So part of the initiative on this was to make sure that every single pathway that was mapped down on this was walkable and reversible, so that we can increase our promotion into next year's events and maybe offer ten K half marathon, marathon lengths and ultra marathon lengths for people to get involved and utilize their number.
Who knows to them for putting in the work to figure that out.
Well, Nick, our GIS guy was the one who came up with that way, that number, you know, the thing, so he did a really great job.
That's awesome.
So they walked that entire thing. Yeah, they started at five-thirty and just ended at five-thirty, so it took them twelve hours.
Our township mileage wise.
Well, it's thirty-six square miles.
Thirty-six square miles, okay.
They did a little bit of backtracking.
Both directions, you can see the arrows, but.
We're moving forward and.
Yeah.
They did a lot.
But yeah, just a fun thing and a lot of, a lot of our, like you say, a lot of our employees have got the kick out of that. And so thanks to those two for putting that together and making it a one thing. That's all I have, but happy to answer any other questions.
I do have a question and sorry for running tighter than I should have been today. I thought the West entrance was supposed to be closed.
All here?
Yeah. Wasn't that in the newsletter?
It was for a portion this morning, it was not accessible, but they got their equipment out, all that what they had, it was.
He been prepared at the east end. No, I was just wondering, I'm like, I was. Need a note to not go to the normal doors. So it's all good from now on, like there's no, that was just tempered.
Courtney said she doesn't know what happens tomorrow when they start digging.
Tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow they'll excavate and then Wednesday, I think they actually do the water main abandonment. And then Thursday they'll come in and take down the apparatus for the pole. So we could have.
So depends how much we're just going on.
Cold or dry.
Natcha.
That's fine.
Supervisor Fletcher and Manager Reed, we're into the summer months again. And I would like to appeal or to put on the agenda a suggestion to not have the cow meetings in the summer months. Because I think it was very, I, I hope that it was helpful for the employees to not have to be here all day and all evening. So I would like to propose if that could be considered again, once again this summer. I, I thought it went well and unless there is some really something critical that requires us to have the cow meeting.
Yeah, gain for attention joy in August.
Yes.
I think everybody's in agreement.
Except for Mary.
We don't have a July media meeting.
Right.
Then we also have in a regular meeting on the eighth. In August, we don't have one because of the election. Make the next one and there you go.
But we, we can, we can log that for next year. I think this year we kind of missed that when we set the meeting calendar. So if that's kind of the feeling of the, of the board when we present the schedule of meetings for that calendar for next year, we can, we can take that into account. The same sentiment is there. Like a plan.
Just don't talk to Mary about it. I just obviously.
Well, then, so I think you wrapped up there, Brian, right? So we'll move on to the fire department report, so Chief, pleased to have you here with us this evening, looking forward to your report.
Question from Brian, do you really want us to park? I'll really, I'll break into the meeting with Pam.
They, I will send you the parking.
Oh, okay.
There's a bus.
Yeah, there, they had, I forget where, I think it's on Marketplace and they'll have a shuttle there. So I will send you that.
All right, I'll bring my vehicle over there. If I have to leave, so.
So, okay, well, they, I think they do have a lane closure on Dixon.
Okay, they did see Americans there the other day.
Okay.
Perfect.
If I can probably park across the street, that's a day here.
Or park and have parkings and spitzers. Project.
True.
Well, I'll try to keep this brief since it's summer, we're trying to go quicker. The tempo here, since you've already received the report in your package, it'll be a little easier. On the front cover, that's, that's all these are gold, gold is doable, not ours. But John Taylor Assistant Chief owned them and he is going through his support training. He's got the six or seven of certifications done, he's got a couple more to go. He's got this special collar now, so John gets on his phone and it makes different sounds so he can go different places. We've used him in the briefings and diffusing, not only here, but other agencies. So he's got a knack for knowing who's under a little duress. Does, he just puts his giant head right on your leg and looks actually like, okay, I'm here, so. Oh, go ahead, Mary's flipping through, so I. Our statement is, as it has been since I've been here, that how we're using our resources and delivering our services with you know, standard professionalism that we continue to uphold. And as you've heard all the sirens going by previously, it's going to be a busy evening. Right now there's Portland ambulance in Delta and so is a Grand Ledge, because it's just all sudden people are falling down. I don't know why it's this time of night, but this time of night it gets busy. All right, the next one is, we're going to go through what our report is. The only thing that we've added is different in a menu here is we're going to talk about where we're pulling our incident numbers from. So probably two of them. It's better division, so the pictures that we have that I know we put on there. So using our consolidated numbers where we worked with Dave Marquette a few years ago with image trend and tried to consolidate also, if our engine goes on call with an ambulance, they would be on the same incident. We run into some glitches with that, that we're finding that it would not keep accurate times for the second vehicle going there. And it wouldn't actually count them in our, in the NFRS, our National Clear Incident Reporting System. So we are going back to the numbers that Eaton County gives us through CAD. So those numbers look a lot higher, but every vehicle that goes on an incident gets a number that helps us track things throughout the county in its same standard that everybody else in the county is, is going for. They've been doing, we're the only ones to change to try to consolidate. We are working with image trend, they've got an idea on how to make it work better. Dave said in the meeting when he had, had a meeting, he had an audit by image trend, they came here and helped us get through some systems. And they think they have an idea of how they can make it flow better. So we're hoping that that's where we go with this, so. He can put the, the next one there for a sec. So we're looking at our five year compared to very similar to last year, we just added new year, you can store, we had COVID. And that's where our, you know, this is still using the consolidated run volume forms that we've been using in the program. Next one is the two, this is where we are going to show you what it looks like when we use the CAD numbers. So in the annual report, I don't know if you've ever seen the annual report, but what I'm going to pass. This is the Eaton County month report, so you can kind of see where the, where we're getting these from. And this is a, a report that's available to everybody every month. And you can go right on their website and get it. They email it out to everybody, but this is just to give you an idea of what we see when it comes in. The pictures on the screen, that's the annual report, so you'll, the fighter numbers are on the left. You can see that Delta Township definitely controls the number of run volume for each town for the biggest entity at thirty-six percent. When you look at the EMS calls for service, you'll notice that Eaton area has more numbers than we do, but they get an incident number through dispatch for all their transfers. Those aren't just mental responses, so as they're transferring patients from hospital to hospital, they get an incident number for that, and so that's why their numbers are higher than ours. We do not do those kind of calls, we're through the nine-one-one system only. So we're still thirty-four percent of the county's use for EMS calls for service. The next one there. So using these numbers, it shows that our, our fire call for service, we're over thirty-four hundred vehicles that are going and runs fire vehicles. And EMS calls are at fifty-seven, almost fifty-eight hundred, so like give us a, a total of just under ten thousand or just over nine thousand, depends on how you look at it, our calls for service. On Eaton County's central site, you can click the link and Kelly Fanning and the director, which these up there every month for anybody to get. So it's public information, so we're trying to just apples to apples. What you see on their site is what we're going to try to present to you, or at least that's the proposal, trying to keep you informed.
Chief, is this report, you said it's public, so we could go out and see these? Is there a way, Brian, to get us the link or something if we want?
You can look in, County Central Dispatch.
Okay.
They'll take you right to their site and they'll show all their annual reports, their monthly reports. And they last them out monthly anyway, but you can, you can access them there for your public information. And their report also concludes things about their employees as well, what they're doing, so it's kind of nice.
Do I have a question?
Yes.
So if it, if it's a call for service, the fire, that doesn't necessarily mean it is a fire, but that means the fire trucks went out.
Right, so if an ambulance is on medical and they need assistance, they contact dispatch, another tow wheel cell, another run number generated and they respond, well, it could be a cardiac arrest, it could be somebody who's very heavy, could be an extrication, several complaints.
Okay.
But it does not mean it's a fire, it's a fire vehicle.
Yeah, so looking at these numbers is tracking where our vehicles go out, not what kind of incidents they go to and that sort of thing, that's separate.
That's in the report.
That differently.
Yeah, it's in our reports that we generate, show what they went on. This, they just separated by a fire-generated incident and EMS-generated incident.
Thank you.
One way it's probably helpful to look at it is there's a, there's an incident, which is like the first number, then this is like how much response, it's an incident versus response, right?
And it's like, like law enforcement, if they have several vehicles going to an accident, you have first unit or whatever unit is ready or important, you have supplemental reports, but they usually get a number that supports the first report, so it's, in a way, it's, it's what that is.
But this helps us understand the way we're tearing our vehicles, the time that people spend, it's, it's more for, for personnel, for our equipment, that sort of thing.
It tracks much better in our reporting system than, that's one of the last slides. But we have, through image trend, we have something called continuum. And we can look at real-time data and it shows heat maps of where the vehicles have been in the last day, last week, last year. And the numbers of calls, I believe Sheriff's Department did that, their annual report showed, you know, like a big star with all these numbers. Ours does the same thing, we can look at where our call volumes are medical-wise or accident-wise and can show response times, can show how long it's taken them to get out the door. It generates a lot of information for us. And you can pull up each vehicle in this program to see how many calls agent four-eleven or thirty-three or battalion chief or an ambulance, and you can, you can get it down to each vehicle on the list of the vehicle. So it's much more detailed. We're hoping that when we work with image trend to do the consolidation again, that all that data will transfer. So the number still looks high, but you still can see everything that we're doing. But this is kind of like a Band-Aid until figured out. But this is the same system everybody else uses in the county. So even using their numbers, the trend is still going up, but EMS just happens to have gone down a little bit. So that's a good thing. But we projected out for, you know, the next one, it's a projection for next year, we're looking at just about ninety-four, a hundred and twelve, so it's only going up a couple hundred and twelve maybe. That's just projected. But it's kind of a nice fine slowing kind of our, our use and our, our volume. We're finding out the ambulances looking glass station is running more and more into this area because of the demand. And their ambulance, their ambulance, how do you, how you, their, one they just purchased is, well, shouldn't be in service here in the next couple of weeks yet. Radios were getting installed today, the state still has to come in and do its inspection, so it's, it's getting there, it's just a matter of getting all the parts in the right place. Then they'll just be stationed over there, part of the system, so it'll still get involved and go everywhere, all of the other agents go. So our, when you look at our call volume, it's kind of leveling out, the only day it seems to be the slowest is Sunday. I say slowest, but it's only down, you know, forty to fifty calls from some of the other days. So that's, that's kind of leveling out, our hours by use is still about the same as it's been the last three years. We're still between nine AM and six PM seeming to be the busiest. Usually when people are going to work and when they're coming home. I think last year the highest was at lunchtime, it's still kind of spikes there in the middle, that people get in trouble when they're out to lunch. It's not right.
And when they're on their way back.
This a lot of accidents on Saginaw and Saginaw Ave is, I don't know why there, but that's a big intersection for accidents, same with two-year marketplace and down here by BJ's, it's just, it's crazy. So if you look at this, the slide here with our, the the average patient time at the hospital arrival till uploading. When we did our report in COVID, there were wait times of two hours. So now we're down to thirty-three minutes, which is a good time, getting better. But they're changing, I'll probably run their ED at Sparrow specifically. We're able to get people uploaded a little faster than we used to. So there's a lot of changes still going on with that system, so that's a good number of have drop. The, the next one is the top fifteen busiest addresses. And as you look at these addresses, most of them are care facilities. The number is five, is on Millet, that happens to be GM. So we're expecting as soon as Altium opens, that will probably double. But we're getting, we have, I've been with senior apartments as first and Regency at Lansing, Delta Retirement Lodge at Lansing. And then Urgent Care is in there too. It just seems more of the care facilities are our biggest users of the system. Going again. So you can see where we've transported to. And we're transported to these different areas, first by patient choice, where they want to go. They also go by priority of the medical, if it's priority one, and it meets a criteria that they can only go to Sparrow or Stroke or some level one trauma service, they go there. We've had one transport to Spectrum, which is now, changed name. Corwell. Downtown Grand Rapids, and I, I was trying to find that and I don't know if it was pediatric, it might have been a pediatric, we transported there. But you can see all the different medical facilities that we go to, sometimes these other ones, partly because we're being ordered. If McLaren or Sparrow, EDs are closed or yellow, we, they divert us to other facilities. So that's where we've gone in the last year.
I'm surprised that we go Jolly, Road, Sparrow's Jolly.
Yeah.
Did eleven times.
Yeah.
So that would be if they divert you, not the patient says, I want to go to Jolly.
Right.
Okay.
That's generally a diversion, like new McLaren facility, we would depends on the type of medical, they'll take med threes, med fours. And McLaren, the medic, medic control might let us just divert there to save time, which would be great. And that's the plan. When that opens up, we'll be able to take those lower tier medicals that they can handle there. And then the turnover is much faster and we don't drive across town.
Because McLaren is a level.
They're like two or three.
I think they're a level three and Sparrow's a level one.
Yeah, they have it, I know for sure, we only have one level one.
Right, I think, I think McLaren's a three.
There's much more that they have to do to get to a two and a three, one, but these incident by properties, you can see one and two family homes, that's where we see our biggest draw. And again, these are only the top fifteen, so you can see the different things along the bottom that we go to. And transportation is in there and highways and divided highways, that's kind of a busy thing for us. Okay, next one. And it says number of fires here, that's not correct, that's how it produces the report. It's a number of fire-related incidents, it could be a fire alarm, it could be somebody's CO detectors going off. It could be an accident where they just need accident scene cleaned up. So not fires, it's just fire-related incident where a fire vehicle has to go there, a little larger vehicle. So you can see the, the, the top few there, how many calls just for those top few fire runs. Safe fire runs, but it's not a fire. For fire prevention, not much has changed there in the numbers, except for the number of fire losses. Be the next one there. Last year we had the large loss and that was because the tractor trailer fires at DMK. We also had something at Myers as well burned up, eighteen semis, I think, last year. So that's where our big dollars came in. So now we're back to where the average should be, we're calling right in line, nothing big has happened this year. The next one shows again what fire inspectors involved in, there's a lot of reach, reaching out to schools and working with schools along with, you know, some kids networks, he's working with Eaton County, Berry County. He's on the MIFIT for Michigan Fire Inspectors and they're also working on the food truck inspection program to try to consolidate that to make it easier and then it's recognized in other counties, so they don't have to do multiple inspections. So it's something new he's trying to undertake. And one after that is burning permits, kind of a pain of, of having burning permits. The numbers for permits have gone down and we think people are just not getting them anymore, they just take a chance and they burn and we get called and we can issue if they don't have a burning permit, an issue, I take it and we put it out. So those numbers are down, that's, that's okay. Didn't have anything getaway to this this year. Next section, we're going into our training. And these are all the areas, nearly four thousand hours of training that we had to put in over last year. And this is just a sampling of many of the things that we'd have to do. And a lot of these are connected, so like the live fire training, you have to go through NFPA fourteen oh three certification. You have to fire instructor one, you have to have a fire officer training to do these two. So to get one, you have to have two or three to make it complete. So there's a lot of things that are always in constant motion here.
And are we compliant with all of our trainings?
With all of our trainings, yes, we're keeping up with what we're supposed to have. That's the state in a new change where we can track fire training hours as well as our EMS licenses. So that's all tracked. We just, it'll be coming up here, we'll get a letter from the state fire marshal, fill it out, we'll submit it. We are, we're in compliance with all of our training. So it's hard to keep up when it's as busy as they are. Emergency management, we kind of got busy this last year. This is just a screenshot of the incident action plan that we fill out for events. And for fireworks, based on the wind conditions and what was happening, that's the plume. If something bad happened and the fireworks went badly, that that would be the general direction that the, the cloud would go with all of the gunpowder byproducts. So we project that out in any of our activities that are coming up. Just to give us. Just to give us an idea based on the wind within like three hours of the event. And obviously you remember the storm damage we had um in August. Uh, that uh, that was quite a line of storms that came through here and this, this year's been very active as well. Uh, the house on the center, uh, that's actually a garage, so I. It's on the Delta River, I believe, driveway kind of goes down and that's what's left of the garage. Uh, garages aren't covered under FEMA and storm damage, it's the house. Okay, that garage is just strewn apart in pieces. Uh, the lower right, they'll blow up in our next picture, but uh, I don't think they got a building permit for that one, so I mean, I mean, you saw it in your packets, so.
What is that?
It's a pergola at the end of backyard.
Yeah. Relocated, yes.
Yep.
Standing up, yeah.
It's very level.
Yeah, when I first thought, I thought, it's crazy, why would they do that? And then I was like, oh, it blew up there.
And it got through the trees and they're sad. So crazy stuff, the storms doing.
Luckily in that last slide, that guy was out mowing his grass.
People were out, would believe what people are doing. We really push uh smart nine-one-one or it's good when you're traveling, you have on your phone, you're in an accident in another state. Uh, they have immediate access to uh your personal information to call family members and medication, that's, everything is on there. Uh, Eaton County has Rave and there are seventy-seven facilities in the county that use it for the employees, which panic button, buttons, there's holdup alarms, there's everything like that that are available for. Businesses and it's free. Uh, and we also are a, a PCII certified, so we can. Like, for example, when the work plant is done, we can take all the blueprints. Work with the state to have the prints and everything protected, so it can't be FOIA. Uh, so if somebody wanted to do some nefarious, nefarious activities, they wouldn't be able to get the blueprints, we could lock those down. So it's something we can consider for the future as well.
I can attest to nine-one-one, the smart nine-one-one, I was in Missouri, southern Missouri with my brothers. And I got the tornado warning on my smart nine-one-one. Forty-five seconds before the. Fire runs went off.
It's, it's crazy how it works and they're really pushing the uh, what, three words? Uh, for people to use to share with their family and it works with dispatch, so if you're lost, like if they're canoeing. And they overturn and mostly everybody has, if they're canoeing, their phones are ziplock bags are waterproof. You don't know where you are in the, in the river, you can text nine-one-one. And you can send them the three words that pops up in the app and they'll find out where you are within ten feet. So it's a neat program. Uh, we tested it and exercised two weeks ago. And it's really something to use, so it's something your family can use, it's free. Uh, some of our successes uh that we've had. Um, our, our new aerial, you know, you've noticed they've been out training with it every day. Uh, we're at the point where it can go in service or it can be used, uh, everybody has to get about ten hours of driving time or. We consider them uh to be able to drive it and operate it. Uh, it's, it's just a little different than our old aerials, this is just much smoother, faster to set up. Um, lighter, lower. Uh, it's, so if you look up like today, it was up and they were spraying water all over the place, uh. Testing everything on it, so everybody's getting tested on it. And we've got uh a new engine coming. We should be doing a mid-point inspection this month, or we should take delivery of that by the end of July. And we have another ambulance coming in, I believe, by the end of the year. Uh, and obviously two weeks, two weeks ago. Time flies, two weeks ago or last week, uh, our, our biggest success is Jenna that's back to work. Um, as she says, I rose from the dead and uh, but uh. She's very emotional about it and uh you saw the, the bond that she and Corinne kind of have formed. Uh, Corinne took control of that scene and uh worked tremendously, she does with every patient and. Jenna was kind of talking about the time that they got her to the E-Go, it's just across the apparatus base, so that was. That, that's a huge success for everybody. She's such a pleasure to have around, she's one of those people you wish we could clone, we get a bunch more. Some things that we'd like to look at in the future, uh, that real-time data, that's what I talked about with uh. Continuing program that uh. Dave Marquette thinks he can make it work, so just enough is out there, but that's something we have to get approval from the manager and everything. Uh, we'd like to be able to give regular updates on what's going on, whether it's. Just doing the county report or something that we produce, it'd be nice to have available to the manager and everybody. Uh, the new pump and ambulance we have coming and we've got people in fire officer development because we. We had one retirement, we've got another one in a few weeks. Um, so our younger people, they're having to step up, get educated on how to lead in the officers. The next two days, we've got uh captain and battalion chief written testing for vacancies. And then the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, we have assessment centers for those positions as well, so. By the next, the end of the next three weeks, we'll be able to turn in the results from the testing and the assessment center to manager. And then he'll take that, give his interviews and decide. What order, what person people are going to move up to the next ranks, so. We're getting to that point of being able to fill those holes. And actually the last slide, it just said, if there was any questions, we haven't had a department photo here and.
It's a nice photo.
Uh, can you remember the last one that I saw that's hanging there, it's probably seven or eight years old, so. Other, try to keep it shorter, just.
Just a couple of questions. Um, one, um. What, um, do you still go to new business establishments to do, check the. Fire extinguisher and other services that you guys do?
Business they have to get a, their uh. Occupancy, so we would go through any new business that. You know, our zoning and building inspections would be there as well, so a new business, we all have to go through there and make sure that they have everything.
And then the other question is for our residents. Um, I don't know what services you try changing batteries or changing. Smoke detectors, I can't remember some of the awful services you almost questioned.
I have not checked our webpage to see if it's up to date, but yes, if somebody calls, they had problems with their uh CO detector or their fire alarms. We can go there and check them. Uh, if they're electric, we can't do anything with those. It's bad, you're operated, you can replace those, because we do have a lot from the Red Cross. With the ten-year lithium batteries that will take out their old ones and.
For batteries or for the carbon or both?
Uh, usually the, there's some that are combination, um, and. Ones that we have are just smoke alarms that have the ten, ten-year batteries, the CO are generally a plug-in with a battery backup. So we can replace the smoke alarms. I don't think we have any COs that we can pass out, we're out of those. So we can do any of those things and we're out, we're doing community CPR. And so there's things like that that we're doing as well.
Sometimes I'm asked by seniors, the senior group, and I wanted to have the latest information.
Oh, they have, you have, they're asking for something specific. Uh, shoot me an email and if something we do, then I can hook up. Write people through that and then we take care of it.
That great, well, are we still doing Knox box?
Yes, uh, we, we do that every, they're Knox box, yeah, they're, they're. One of our support services is going around now trying to. Update them, you go and open up the box, make sure the keys open their businesses and then seal the box back up. So, but yeah, that's a requirement that they have to have those.
Well, if we did, we were doing them on homes also.
If, if somebody's got a mixed condition, then we can do those as well.
Right.
Or they can get a cheaper type and they, they give a combination to send you a dispatch and that pops up in our notes on our cap. If we're going there for medical, you look at the notes and the, the code is there, so it's not broadcast, look a radio, but everybody can listen to.
And my second question is, when you're having. Some regional chiefs meetings, can you find out? If there are any departments that are assisting with recycling. The smoke alarms with lithium, they're super, it's like fifty dollars to recycle. Forty or fifty dollars, so I know that they're going in a landfill because nobody can afford to pay fifty dollars recycling. And then turn around and pay fifty or sixty for a replacement.
I will check.
So it's very worrisome. Because those lithium, and there's a lot of them now that are that way, that are self-contained with the lithium in them.
Yeah, in the dump, they're uh looking glass, they have fires every day. These little batteries, they just push it up or to the side, just look for them from scooters and smoke alarms, things like that, let me imagine. I will check and find out.
That just doesn't seem like the appropriate.
No, it'd be better.
methodology.
Uh, wait until you have car batteries to recycle. Back.
Was our department involved in any of the two major semi-accidents on I ninety-six in the construction area?
That was with your township.
Okay.
Just, just south, uh, they had, they had those.
Okay.
Nope. No, we had the, Miss Cageway went up here pretty recently, we're.
Right.
Uh, we were at the funeral, helped with the funeral this past Saturday, so. Uh, and we helped cover their area for twenty-four hours, so they had. Do that, they're doing a debriefing here pretty soon here for their people.
Thank you.
Any questions for the chief? Sinan, thanks chief, we appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Our last, that was one of the relatively quick head and that type of discussions, uh. We began the discussion a while back when uh trustee Bourne requested that we look at bringing body come housing to Delta Township. One of the things that the staff has found as we look into it more is that uh just about all of the, maybe all of them do. Uh, uh, lower income housing is subsidized by the local government through tax abatements and they're provided with. Uh, a pilot payment with taxes where they may pay some to cover piece of fire or whatever. But we currently in Delta Township have a uh ordinance that prohibits uh those types of pilot. Uh, for housing, so we want to move forward in this direction, we need to remove that uh ordinance and put in place. A process to uh put together pilots and prove it and everything, so. Staff is looking tonight, if that's the desire of the board, move forward on that and if it is, then at a future date, uh, they'll come back with uh. Drop language and they think that, uh, look at, to see what we need to do, so. What's the pledge report on that?
Well, I, I found out that we can require that it's a combination. Um, of, um. Low income in our group. It's been come. Affordable, we can say affordable versus low income, first of all, so I would leave for affordable. And we also in a replacement ordinance can ask for a combination where it would be affordable and uh next to. Which would be my desire.
So it's not exclusive with what you're saying.
Right.
It makes it go for the same market.
Market, right.
Well, no, not necessarily market, affordable and mixed, mixed income is a hundred and twenty percent. So it's workforce, right, yes, it, it, so you can do a mix, your ordinance would have to say that you. Require, you know, mixed, so mixed income, which is a hundred and twenty percent. And then um affordable is sixty percent.
Something can be medium income.
And what is a low income? A low income is, well, it depends on whether you're in section eight. Which is designed, this is not section, this is not a section eight, that's a different, different thing, so.
Section eight, yeah, the low income, the section, section eight vouchers are really, there's no factor, it's just that rent. Um, is some, they have their own apps on rent based on an area, so it has nothing to do with like the township. It's any, it can be any housing.
Except low, low income.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, we don't need it for.
Right.
Exactly.
State made or rule it out.
They just pay a portion of that rent or all, depending on that income of that renter.
I don't think Michigan does full section eight.
This is more focused on development of new housing.
Flowing the development of affordable as, as that definition is. And is there a definition for workforce housing?
Yes.
And what is that, does anybody know?
Uh, that's a hundred and twenty percent of the median income of the county.
Mixed income. I'm bored, looking at it.
Um, I, I'll just. While refraining right now from providing any comment, as people aboard knows. How we have projects that we're looking to do and. Um. And have property in the township, so I probably need to excuse myself on this discussion, so I will. Um, but I think you all are aware of that, so I'll refrain from any comment on.
Just so the rest of the board knows, I've been doing research into this, the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission uh has uh. Resources for us, so we don't have to go it alone. Um, I've been in contact with um someone who is uh with the Regional Planning Commission. One of whom is the person that we work with at CAP. And then another person from uh Tri-County that um based on the statewide housing report. We are in a particular region, Tri-County region, and so they have resources and I will get you the name of someone I would like. To come in and give us more information. They're putting together tools for municipalities to be able to implement these things and to understand them and use them to the best. But also providing that data, so we know what kind of housing we need here. So we don't have to do that like work, it's, it's out there, but just, you know, want to be aware of it. And if you want examples, if anyone wants to see examples of these kinds of projects, Traverse City has nine of them. On their website and you can go and look at them. Nine different places that they have approved a pilot for a particular uh building.
But then.
This is, I think, a good direction for us to consider, because we always say that. Delta Township is the place to work, live and play, but that really doesn't apply to everyone. And so I think it would be great for us to. Work with finding affordable housing or workforce housing, especially since our workforce is growing. And certainly if we have the capacity in terms of the other areas of issue with our sewer and all of that. I would love to see us have attainable housing. For people who are wanting, who are working here. So while I love the transportation system and all the changes we've done with that, it would be nice if they didn't have to take a bus to come in here. But they could stay here right in Delta Township.
Which is good for us too, because then they spend their money here shopping and eating out and it supports our businesses and that sort of thing, so the money goes into our local economy.
Kudos for bringing this up, I don't know how it came up, but kudos.
Our staff looking into what needs to take place to do all this.
Thank you.
This is, so I think you got your head in the bag, Brian, to go forward. At a future date with uh specific language and things like that. So is there anything else here before we adjourn? I don't see no further business points, it's your turn.